So I am going to call a meeting of the zoning board of appeals. March sixteenth meeting to order at seven o'clock. And let's members introduce Margaret Duster, a Margaret Walker member.
Nancy Sherrill-Holston.
Annette Falcumb, our chair.
Karen Kopta, member.
Bill Davies, member. Jim Kelly, alternate.
Fire.
Wait. Sue Scott, alternate.
Steve?
Yes, Steve Meyer, member. Oh, alternate, excuse me.
Okay, so I think all our members are here, so I'm gonna see Margaret, Nancy, Annette, Karen, and Bill. And I just want to remind everybody that we are the, even though you're not on Zoom, we are all being taped. And the recordings are all up on the, actually on YouTube, I'm told.
Yeah.
So just.
Seven views.
Yeah, so just, just reminder. So is that, is that blurry or is it me? So. And we have on the, on the screen, Jim Stanton.
Larry's waiting to be let in.
Larry's waiting to be let in.
I don't know if you can.
Yeah. Okay. So Larry is in, there he is. Hi Larry.
You're muted, Larry.
Sorry, I think the link that was here was not aligned with the meeting, so I came in a diff, I came in by typing in the meeting number. The actual link you had is maybe from a prior meeting or something.
Okay, and we have members of the public here. One, two, three, and one on the screen. And Jim and Larry, are you, are you gonna represent yourselves or is your agent gonna represent you?
Our, our agent, Kevin Bennett.
Kevin, okay, do you want to come up to the table, Kevin?
Absolutely.
Okay. So. Julie, you have this as a continu-, as a continuation?
Oh no, that's technical.
Okay. So. Julie, I don't have the full legal notice, so would you?
Yep, it's actually, here it is. It was notice invoices on, you can actually see it, on the first MVA till March. And the Roxbury zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at Southern G M, at the Roxbury Town Hall to consider the application of Lawrence Alphazon and James Stanton, accessory back thirty-seven lots zero zero seven, located at Schoolhouse thirteen Schoolhouse Road, case file two thousand twenty-three zero zero lot one, variance to build a twenty-four by twenty-four foot garage near the northern Bravo entrance within the front setback, ten feet from the property line, per zoning regulation variance from section three point ten point two. At this hearing, interested persons may be present and oral and written communications will be accepted. The documents related to this application can be viewed at the town of Roxbury website. And Annette Falcumb, our chairperson.
Thank you, Julie. And we have verification of notification.
Yes, all the.
I have brought Kevin Bennett, Bennett Sullivan Associates. I have brought the hard copies as well.
That's great.
So those were stand over last week.
Oh, oh, okay, great, all right. So Kevin, you're on.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Bennett, Bennett Sullivan Associates of Southbury, Connecticut, representing the applicants. Basically, what we have is a fairly large parcel of land at thirteen Schoolhouse Road. And it has a lot of topographic challenges for the construction of a two-car garage within the fifty-foot setback. Larry and Jim had asked me to come up and look at it. We've been practicing and building in the state of Connecticut. It'll be forty years in July of this year. So we, we represent a lot of clients that have difficult situations and they had asked us to come up. We went, met with them. The ideas that they had were for basically two-car garage, but they're, they've lived in the home for about twenty-five years. And their concerns is accessibility from, you know, the garage to the house. Not as much to be attached because that would be very difficult to, to do without doing a great deal of damage to the property because it's, there's very old historic stone walls on the edge. It would mean coming in from a lower level with the driveway. The, the landscape and the stone work around the home is very nice and it's, a lot of it is very old. So, you know, you would do a lot of damage visually to the landscape to come in on the lower level. The other area would be where you see that ten-inch honey locust tree on the survey map in, in the front of the house.
Excuse me, Phil, you can even get up and point it out easier for you.
Okay.
And I can expand this.
It's, it's basically the area up in, in here, which, you know, could, if the property would allow it, would be a logical area to do it within the fifty-foot setback. This is a large ledge outcrop. There is a lot of ledge here. You can see the topographies take it up quite a bit. The garage would have to be basically blasted and put into the hill so that you could come out of it on a grade that would allow them to come into the house. The thoughts are that if we could build on this side, this area would not be really needed to be dug in. It could basically be done on grade. We would, we would dig for the footing walls, which would be very short, and they could walk directly in on level. The next is a second location. If you could bring that up, Julie. The next one. There it is. Pull that up a little. Basically would be on the other side of the driveway, which would come off of the existing driveway in and to be able to enter the house on grade again. And these two are, based on the landscape, would be low impact to the property. So that's basically what we're asking for is a reduction in the setback. The home is about fifty-seven feet for the setback, so you can see the setback is gonna be somewhere up in here. So that's why I said this would be the only area that could be built in and that would be difficult at best. They've done a kind of a whole study in the layout for it to go in there and, and the amount of cuts and blasting for the ledge would be, they, they just decided that they didn't want to do that much damage to the, to the look of the property. So what we're asking for is basically the geography of the property is to ask to, to reduce it from a fifty-foot setback to a ten-foot setback. There are other examples of that. They're in there, different locations in town that have structures very close to the road. The locations are, you know, six, a schoolhouse has a barn twenty-three feet off the road. Ninety-five topit is thirty feet off. The thirty-five schoolhouse is about twenty-five feet off. And two sixty-two topit is thirteen feet off the road. Walton Road, there's two, one is seven foot and one is thirteen foot. So it's not, you know, it's not unimaginable.
Questions from commission?
So are you proposing here tonight, proposing two alternate, you know, two versions A of version B?
Correct. Jim and Larry are on the line. The, the first one would be, you know, the most acceptable. The second is also a possibility. Both have basically the same impact to the property. They're setback, they're both ten foot off the property.
Do you tell me what you see as the hardship?
The property does not allow the, the garage to go back within the setback from the ledge outcropping makes it very difficult and, and the, the building of it would be, you know, a lot more difficult. And, and the impact visually on the property.
Even where the honey locusts are.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
That would be, that would meet the criteria for the fifty-foot inside back.
The criteria, correct. That's what, that's where I started. It, it can be done. It, it just, you know, the, the, the geographics of it are more difficult.
Margaret, Bill, Steve?
Yeah, I have one question. There, there is shown on some of the material, a patio. Where is the patio presently?
I'm sorry.
There's a photograph, there's a topographical photograph shows existing house.
That was, that was taken off of an aerial photo. I don't know what that word is.
It's not. There's no patio there.
That's a mistake. Someone had drawn a, had done a drawing that had a patio off of a garage that was in that area and somehow that never got off. We've asked a couple times about that and I'm sorry, it's there.
Margaret?
Lower.
Oh yeah. Unusual. With this size property going back in then, close to the road, into the setback. I'm not sure I see the hardship, but I'm not sure I've seen the whole possibility. It's a fairly large property. Yeah, I think the houses you referred to close to the road were all, the structures were all pre-existing, am I right?
Some were, were not. Is that correct, Larry?
I don't, I don't know. I think most of them are pre-existing. They're historic.
But some of them are from within the last thirty years.
So I'm puzzled. I'm puzzled as to the hardship and.
The, the primary issue is topographic. So if you look at it from a flat perspective, from a plan view, it doesn't make any sense why it should be a problem. But if you go there and stand there, then you'll understand. It's a really a topography issue. The elevation and the quick rise out of the house means that it's almost impossible to sight right next to the house, which is what would be required to beat the setback.
So A and B, would each one require a blast? Did you say one would require blasting or is that one?
No, they would, they would be the minimal impact in the actual area for the setback. I don't believe we'll need.
You're saying if it went elsewhere, there would be some blasting?
Because there's a lot of grade that needs to come down for them to be able, if they built on top of it and came down wrong.
It'd have to be blasted?
To bring the garage down. It's, it's all ledge outcropping up there. Any weapons? No. And this is, the proposed garage is how many feet from the house? Approximately? Probably fifty.
Jim?
Uh, I actually know the property a little bit because I've lived nearby and I, I know how beautiful it is. And I see the geographical problems. But this is probably a dumb question, but if, if, if your clients have lived all these years without a garage, I mean, I don't have a garage. Why don't you have a garage?
Well, the concern is, you know, they want to live here full-time.
Right.
And, you know, they're concerned about, you know, getting on an age and, you know, having the ability to, to park the cars. They, they do have, whenever they're up here, if there's a storm or something, they have to back the car in on the sidewalk, you know, to get it out of the way of the driveway because it's, it's a fairly narrow driveway to get in.
I'm not filling in with the property and I think that was the problem, but anyway.
The plowing and all, and as time goes on, if they're gonna spend, you know, a full-time up here, move out of the city, they would like to have garage.
I don't have one, so you're probably asking the wrong person.
Sue Scott, do you have any questions?
Um, not right at the moment.
Okay. Um, I, I have a clarification question. The, I don't know if this is to you or Jim and Larry, but on the, I guess on the original application, it, there's a, it requests a variance from three point ten point two, but on the application, it's requesting a variance from section sixty-one. So we really need, I mean, twenty-one, we really need to know which one you're trying to vary.
I cross-referenced it to see who's, who's going off the master chart. So I, so I grabbed the accessory building variance.
Okay, so, so you put, you put this three point ten point two in. Okay.
Because what they were originally asking for is from the master chart.
For the master chart, right?
The variances from the boundaries, so.
Right, okay, okay, thank you. That explains that. So we're varying three point ten point two. Well. So the, the thing that makes this a little unusual for us is the property is conforming. And so we're being asked to create a non-conformity when one doesn't exist. And our mandate is actually to reduce non-conformities. So I'm not sure if ever had an application. So. We, to, to create, normally what comes to us is there's a property that is non-conforming or the house is non-conforming. And the application then is to expand in a non-conforming area. So the mandate of the zoning regs is to reduce non-conformities. So it's a big ask to ask us to create a non-conformity. And so then, then that would get us to the questions we're required to ask, which is, are there any options?
Correct.
And. We are, we are technically not supposed to, for us, it's a little bit black and white. Neither is an option, neither is an option. And I, I don't know that it's in our mandate to consider. Certainly not financial. We're not allowed to consider financial impact. Whether or not we're, we're, it's a consideration that the impact on the property that we would have, that's, that we would have to talk about. But the fact that there is, that there already, that there is an option, as unpleasant an option as it is, makes it tough for us.
Correct. You know, the, the geographic hardships are ones that, you know, we've seen zoning board of appeals agree with over the, like I say, I've done this for a lot of years and I understood that before I came here.
Yeah.
And Jim and Larry understood it before they came here. But, you know, the, the, the area that could conform is kind of so unpalatable that, you know, they've hired us to, to, to do, go through the work that we've gone through.
Right.
To show. The area on S P one oh three shows the entire property. Now, if the house were anywhere in two-thirds of the property, we wouldn't even have to have the discussion. But, you know, from the word, the number thirty-seven oh oh seven up, it, it's basically hard to walk on this property. It doesn't really show up in these aerial topographies. But, you know, if, if you fall, you would roll on most of this property. So it's, it is a location that does not really make sense where it could be within the setback. Where it's not within, where it is within the setback is, is the most logical place for it to be on this particular property. It's, it's, it's not a vanity thing. It's not, you know, we want a sixteen thousand square foot deck and then approach on the setbacks. You know, this is basically in, in, you know, the comment of, do they need a garage? You know, I've been doing garage variances again for almost forty years and it's always been, well, I don't have a garage or do you really need it or, in, in these, in this day, you know, it's, an attached garage is the most desirable for people because they can come directly into the home. A detached garage is kind of the second choice, but they would at least like to have somewhere to be able to put the vehicles indoors and be able to walk safely into the house. So it's basically a, a safety issue as well as an aesthetic issue in putting it so it's not in the setback. It, it would, it would be very detrimental to the, to the aesthetics of the home. So that's the reason that we've gone to this great extent.
Sort of double puzzling, we've had a lot of discussion of zoning issues with houses close to the road. And so the fact that it's an unusual change in the setback and then would, then would add another structure close to the road, whether there are questions as to, how old is that? Is it too close to the road? Is it safe? Will anybody be in there? That kind of thing. So the fact that it's that close to the road, I think is another, what's another question?
Well, there's two things on that. One is, it looks close to the road, but its elevation off the road is very high and there's a stone wall between the road and the actual structure. And it is a dirt road on a downhill slope.
I know the road.
It's not like you got cars doing any speed to, to be able to, to hit this structure. Once it's built on the other side of the stone wall, you'd need an excavator, not a car.
I'm smiling because I was stuck behind a water truck in that road.
Yeah.
So I don't know how far I got up, but things, if that had gone into a wall, it would have been really too bad.
So it looks like the property's a hundred and forty feet elevation loss throughout the whole property.
Yeah. Something like that. And if most of it's on this end, you know, it gets fairly flat on this end.
And so the grade, if you were to put the proposed house sort of, you know, the option number three, I would have to say, right? You're gonna, the base of the garage would be at below level of the house?
No, it would be at the level.
And so you'd have to add a second, like a crawl space or something under?
Topography? No, that's high. You're, you're going down so that you can get on the level.
So you'd have to dig in, that's the blasting.
And this doesn't really show as well as.
Who is turning the talk?
Steve Meyer. Just one question. On the, looking at it from the road on the left side of the house, is there slope there also?
I'm not following the, you're talking in the second option?
Well, yeah, but I meant to put it further back, in other words, to put the garage, but not ten feet from the road.
There's, there's slope all over the property. There's significant slope in both directions from the house.
I was asking only because if you were lowering the garage to the level of the house, if you were dug to dig in, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
That's what you're talking about.
Right, it's gonna be about a seven or eight foot cut.
So you're gonna cut it, cut it in and you're gonna have to put here in the, the garage will be.
Well, it'd have to be up here.
Yeah.
I mean, when you come across this way.
Yeah, a fifty foot. That's ten foot right there.
Yeah. This is seven. Pull it back a little bit.
Yeah. You'd have to do a big cut into the, into the stone.
Yeah.
Other questions?
I mean, see the hardship, your hardship, this topography, basically, that's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
You can't, obviously, we can't, we can't discuss the fact that you gotta blast because that's an economic thing, so it's just about.
It's not the, the economics as much as the impact of, you know, the visualness of the area.
I was just asking for the environment.
Yeah, yeah.
Other questions?
Well, I'm curious because I do know the property a bit. Looking at this, it seems to me that if you had no garage and you parked the car where there's the driveway, you would actually be closer to the house walking from the car than you would be from the garage.
Right. Can I, can I comment on that? Because we've been, especially in the, I think it's the option B, which is the one where you come down the drive and you would go right into the garage. We actually have noticed, because we've been thinking about this a lot more now. When you would come out of the garage, because of the width of the, that, yeah, that one, you're actually closer to the house where we, where we park now is close to that constrained area or over. When we would actually come out of the garage, it would be pretty close if you wanted to use our, we don't use our front door, but if you wanted to use the front door, if you had to use it, it would be quite close. Because you'd come out of the side, you'd probably put aside, I'm pointing at things that you can't see, but you'd put a door near the corner at the sidewalk and it's, if, if you look there, it is quite a bit closer.
Are you saying you prefer option B?
That, the one that he's got up, yes.
Option B, yeah.
Yeah. The other one would require some, I think it would be very awkward for pulling out of the drive and going into the road and stuff. This is very natural because you'd come down the drive and go in and back out and go back out. And I know we're not supposed to be talking about convenience and things like that, but between these two, because someone was asking, the other one is prob, this is the one that we were, we.
Personality effect.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure that, you know, I think that would, our decision would be whether or not to grant a variance.
Yes.
And not, you know, if we granted a variance, it would be your choice which one. It's not, it's not, it's not our decision.
Yeah.
Yeah. That would be up to you.
One question, if I may?
Sure.
Is, is the, is the, what I think is option B, which is the one that looks closer to the house, is that further from the road?
No, they're both 10 feet.
Okay. It's hard to tell for the time. Okay.
Okay.
And one comment, just in terms of reference point, what we're really asking for is something very similar to Martha Baldwin's garage, which was a barn on Welton Road. If you go there and look, and you can see how close to the road it is, but it's, it does not really overwhelm the road or does not create a negative impression.
Yeah. I mean, unfortunately, at this, if someone wanted to build that barn, at this point, they couldn't build it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, on Welton Road, which house are we talking about? The very old house? What's the Baldwin house?
It's the very old house.
I know, I'm on Welton, so I'm trying to figure it out.
As you go in, it's on the right, and it has bushes and a barn near the road.
Oh, you mean it's right off of Good Hill?
Off of it.
Right. So, okay, so it's first, the first house off of.
Right, the first one.
No, 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 no. It's further down.
It's in the middle of the road. It's got big bushes and a little barn, and the driveway goes up to the house and the pools.
The barn is right on the road.
Yeah. Oh, that, that house is, that's.
Yeah.
That's 200 years old.
Yeah, that's a very old barn.
And when I first moved here, I thought, boy, that barn is close to the road, so.
Well, it's certainly good for zoning, which is our criteria. So last call for questions before I ask the public for comment heavily.
So one place we were looking at there was ledge. Could you tell me, I'm sorry, I'm not too good at explaining what's in, what are the problems up in here?
Up in here, here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the area where the ledge up cropping zone.
All here, too?
This, these topo's do not look like much because they're very large.
Right.
But if you walked around this corner, you would basically have a hard time to walk down that hill on their lawn.
So how, so you have to blast, how much of the area do you need to disturb in order to end up with the garage and the size you're looking for?
This actual garage that they're talking about, let's call it Scheme B, would be the minimal amount of impact because that would basically be, we would.
What she's asking is how much would you have to blast to be within the setback?
She said seven feet, is that correct? Oh, down here? That's, yeah, seven foot cut. So you're gonna have a slope basically into the, into the property at seven feet into the garage? Yeah. So you're gonna have to account for drainage and those sorts of things because you're gonna have water running down the driveway into that location.
That's true in this area. No, but what about in this area?
You can't even get to that area. You couldn't drive a vehicle from here to there. This right here would be extremely difficult to even walk on.
Because it's so steep?
It's very steep.
So what grade would you think it was? Like more than a 10% grade?
Oh, I bet you this is 25%.
25% grade?
Yeah.
So you're going from 935 to 925?
No, no. She's beyond the house on the other side.
Is there, is there a block there?
Well, it, it wouldn't, they wouldn't even be able to get a vehicle from here.
This is the only other area, possible area.
This would be the only possible area.
Where is that?
You wanna show on the, so everyone can see. You wanna show on the screen?
I'm wondering, is there an option?
One with the survey. That one, that one.
Back up.
Yeah, one. There. No, next one. I guess it's forward then.
There's that.
Next. Right there.
So.
Go back to the other, that shows option A.
Yeah. No, it's this one. That's it. You just missed it again. Right there. Good. This area here, the building would go basically on the ground and be built up. So that, from an input, impact on the property would, would be very minimal. That wouldn't be dug. It would basically be forming the foundation. We're talking about, you know, like a stone foundation, and then filling inside the garage, pouring the slab, and then building on top of it.
Are there any other options on the property?
The only area that would be, would be here, and, and, and it's, again, it's the seven foot cut, and it's.
And the drainage.
And the drainage, and the.
Point to here again.
This area back here.
And that is a problem because.
This is very rocky. It's very rocky.
Rocky.
Yeah. Yeah. All you have to do is go.
So it's like, you say go that side, it's on ledge?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, it's, it's.
Just, well, just to distinguish, it's difficult, but possible. Correct.
Not from the client's point of view, from the fact that the damage of the landscape and the area to go in there, they, they probably just wouldn't do it.
Okay.
Corner of the house is, there's, you look at another main house. If you're facing it from, yeah, on the front left corner, there's an indentation.
Here.
No. Right. If you're attaching it to the house, you looked at the possibility of attaching a garage.
But it's still not, this is 57 feet, so it's still within.
But it's further off.
Wait for the math.
Um.
We're not. I mean, I understand, like, we go back all the old, all the old barns were built by the road because of snow and everything else. That was the reason and all that. To be close to that road. But it's a different here.
Yeah, if, if I may.
And I keep saying topography.
So attaching it to the house is not possible?
I'm gonna say no because you have to get to it. It's, it's, it's hard to explain with, again, the way you walk around, even these topo lines don't look too bad. But when you go to walk around this side of the house, you're dropping right down and, they have a walkout right here.
So that's the question that Bill was asking, is what about that spot right there?
Here. Yeah. Off this corner. Again, the juxtaposition of the garage and the house in that corner, you know, it's a living area right there with windows wrapped around it. You know, it's, it's, it causes a hardship to them for, you know, the home.
I'm not even sure it's, it's all that physically possible. It's more physically possible to do what you don't want to do than attach it to the house. It seems to me.
Well, I mean, this is probably the least feasible.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
This is the second least. And then these two are, from functional point of view as well as a construction point of view, would be the better two.
You know, if, if I may, for a second, I'm looking at the photographs of the house, and none of them seem to show the slope or anything on the north side of the house, which is, and, and, you know, that's, the property seems to run that way. Isn't there anywhere along that?
The middle, the middle photo on the top, Stephen?
Yes. Yes?
That, that, if you can see the perspective there in the slope, this one here in the middle.
Right. At the top row, the middle photograph.
Yeah.
And that's, is that?
I mean, to try to put the garage on this corner of the house, you know, just.
Is, is that the bottom level of that same photo? Is that the equivalent of a seven foot?
Yeah.
Thing that you would have to do?
Yeah.
Doesn't seem that much.
Well, again, it's, it is when you walk down it. I know we're presenting these photos, and they're really not helping our case, but it, it, the perspective, when you're actually walking down there, is a lot different.
Can you tell me what the middle photo is a picture of? I just see part of a house. I can't tell.
This is this corner right here, standing, basically where we're gonna put the garage over here, and then just come right in this sidewalk right here to either the front door or the door that they use more. This is actually that Scheme B location right here, is basically right here. So you have a little bit of air between the house and the garage. Yeah, you're, you're kind of falling off the earth, and this just keeps going down. You know, this is where you would build in. You'd have to blast out here to get down to this level. We took these.
Let me just ask for comments from the public, okay?
Absolutely.
All right. Anyone here?
We're doing a lot of listening.
Okay. All right. Okay. Anyone who's from the public who is on Zoom, want to comment? Okay.
So a lot of free time.
Okay. Unless there are more questions, I'm gonna give the applicants an opportunity to make closing remarks, and then I'm gonna close the hearing. So. Last comments?
I, I would just say that the, the option B seems to be that through this whole conversation, the one that we would most like to go with as far as the reduction in the 10-foot setback, I think you can see in some of these with the stone wall and the road, the visual impact is gonna look a lot more than 10 feet off the road because you do have, you know, the distance from the road to the wall and the wall to the, to the actual setback. The hardship, again, is the topography where it would fit within it, I think would be a very difficult area to do it in. And the client would more than likely not do it at all. If that were the case, they very, very much like to have a garage as they, you know, move forward in their lives. And, and I don't think it's a long ask, but you're the commission.
Yeah, I did have one last question.
Go ahead, Margaret.
Have you discussed all the disadvantages having, I mean, I would be nervous about have turning a conforming lot that I was living on into a non-conforming lot. But anything else you want to do, comes, you know, it becomes a problem. So.
Both the clients are on the line. I believe that, you know, they, they understand that. Jim, Larry, do you, you, you know, what she's saying is that it would be an existing non-conforming lot next time you decide to do anything?
I don't think we have any building plans that, I can't think of anything we'd be doing. Is it that we would be coming back to ask to do something in the future, or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't, no, we're not, we're not planning on, we kept the garage.
Basically, the CEO couldn't approve anything that you wanted to do going forward. It would, it would have to come back to us.
I think that's, in.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah.
That would go beyond what we're allowed to do or not? I guess I don't understand. If we wanted to close in part of that back porch, that side porch there or something, does that mean we would have to come to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't think that would be a big deal, though.
No.
So.
Only other thing I wanted to say is that people are welcome to, to go there and, and walk around in the area, and we welcome ideas from people. I mean, we've spent hours and hours, and we've had a couple of different architects over the years work with us, landscape architects, and trying to figure out where to best put it. And it just, that's right. And we hate taking up your time on this because we realize this is a, a, this is a bit of an, you know, as you've said, I, I don't appreciate everything, but, I mean, I don't understand at all. But it's, we realize this is a big ask. But we've really spent a lot of time trying to figure out what to do. There's no question, we could stick a barn up on the top someplace, and we would, it would be a useless thing as far as a practical thing to have a garage there. It would have all sorts of stone steps and everything, and we're aware that some people do that. We're not, we're not planning on doing that.
Okay. Jim?
Thank you for your time.
Yes.
It's really a, I think you need to understand the topography of it. That's, it's really a three-dimensional issue being, you know, and it's difficult to communicate with 2D. So if you walk it and see it, you, I think you really start to understand the topography issues.
All right. I'm gonna close the public hearing. No, we need to continue. We're gonna close it. Okay. And I'm gonna open the regular meeting. Identification of members, starting again with Margaret.
Nancy Sean Hope.
Make your motion.
Thank you.
Oh, you're right. You don't have to be. You're welcome to stay. Um.
It's on YouTube.
Yeah, you can watch it on YouTube. Nice to see you, Mary.
Thanks.
Uh, yes, you're right. I can't just close it, right? We need a motion.
We need a motion, yeah.
Okay. Phil moves to close the public hearing. Nancy seconds, all in favor. Okay. Now I'm opening the regular meeting. Margaret, you identified yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You did already.
Yeah.
And that's all for the chair.
Carrie Cox, the member.
Bill Davies, member. Jean Kelly, alternate.
Steve Meyer, alternate.
Sue Scott, alternate.
Okay. I'm gonna open discussion on the application in front of us.
It certainly, it seems very reasonable to me to want a garage. I don't have a garage, and I wish I'd asked for one a long time ago. But, and it also seems reasonable to want a garage that's functional, that, you know, that's close enough to the house that would make sense. The problem for me is that, as Nanette pointed out, and we just discussed, it's, the issue is, is taking a, is a bigger one of a garage versus no garage. You know, it's taking a conforming property and creating a variance to, or making a variance to turn, to create a non-conforming property out of it, out of what we're looking at. And, you know, they, the applicant does have, I did not walk the property, but the applicant does, you know, what we've, what we have been allowed to approve in the last couple of years have been issues of topography. And the applicant has made a case for that is the issue. It's the grade. So it's the steep grade. So, you know, yeah, I'm kind of, I'm kind of stuck in the middle, not. it's the steep grade. So, you know, yeah, I'm kind of, I'm kind of stuck in the middle, not yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it doesn't seem a black and white. It doesn't seem as though the issue is really the garage more the issue is changing what the property is.
Bill?
Um, why, why do we have to look at the percentage, you know, I think we're the the number square feet we have in the existing house and then the percentage of the garage, what that is, and then start to look at those numbers and start to think about what would happen if this came before us and it was just a question of number one, that let's say it was non-conforming to begin with, right? So now we have to look at that in that regard. And then I have to look at I'm a big believer that they have a right to put a garage in their property. It's fairly sizable lot with consistently unique terrain, not unique in Roxbury, but it's it's it's, there's nothing that suggests that that there's a better alternative to plant, to place it than where they're gonna, they want to place it. So I don't know. I'm not, I'm not happy with the fact that it's going to increase the non-conformity and but I don't want to say that it's not certainly not unreasonable request. I mean, you can look at that topography, you can see it. I know that I know the property as well. The street. I don't proceed. I don't, I don't think that anything we do here is going to set a precedent on any property in Roxbury by the fact that we would, we would approve it. Um, being the fact that you have so much ledge, there's a potential to change water course, water flow is, and that's that's sort of what I'm looking at before I say no, you know what I mean? I want to make sure that we're we're being, doing our due diligence and remembering that each property is unique. And we as a board have to look at that and consider that. And that's what I think we have to do rather than saying, you know, every, if everything is if everything, because it's going to make this property a non-conforming structure, is denied. I don't know that we're doing as good a job as we could as a board to look at individual cases. So I think we should consider it. I like your input as well as on board and see what you're thinking, but I certainly don't want to say because it's because it's non-conforming, we can't, we can't approve it. I don't I don't believe, I believe that topography is a definite problem. This is a very steep, steep property with 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 ledge and you can change, if you blast into ledge, you could change water course, you may not be able to fix because if there is ledge, you, you know, run off into the main house and things of that nature could be could be a challenge as well. So I just want to kind of like look at everything and not just say this is not a reasonable, I know it's a reasonable request. It's just you know, that's where I.
Margaret. So I too am not a fan of blasting, but I think it, I think it's very unusual. I think it probably would set a precedent to change of a conforming lot to a non-conforming lot. And I think it it conflicts with our, what we're told we're supposed, told we're supposed to be doing. And I and then to add to it, that what we're being asked to do is like not to add another driveway, but actually put a house, you know, a structure that close to the road. So it's two, two problems there. It does appear to me that, well, I should say I appreciate the functional garage issue because I have a garage that I never used because it's down a little hill. So my car is out of winter too. The it it does appear there are other options. I I hate to think about the blasting, but in terms of creating a non-conforming lot with a structure that's going to be in which human beings and cars will occasionally be right close to that road, which is tricky, tricky driving road. But I think we've, just the fact that it's that close to the road, no matter what the road, and that there are I've got an architect, so I'm not convinced there are not any other options, but there, there are some other options, even if I find them unpalatable. But they do exist. So that leads me that that leads me away from approving this or giving a variance.
Nancy?
Hi, I am pretty much of the same thinking as as Margaret. I I find it difficult to think of a lot of this size that a twenty-four by twenty-four foot garage could not find a home somewhere without having it be ten feet from the road. Even if they pushed it back closer to the house, I mean, even if it was seven foot into the setback versus forty feet into the setback, it's it's a, it's a difficult decision. I mean, I certainly understand the owner's desire to have the structure and we don't like to deny people building things that are within our, within, you know, the criteria that we have to follow. So I'm, you know, I'm very ambivalent about about approving this. I I mean, there's things that we don't know. We don't know if they did a little bit, a little bit of blasting, how much it was going to affect the water resources and the water flow and the drainage. Again, I don't, I don't have that information. I don't have that knowledge. So it's difficult to make a conforming property into a non-conforming.
Jim?
Uh, well, luckily I'm an alternate.
I'm always, are alternates allowed to talk but not vote?
I'm not allowed to vote.
I know, I know you're not allowed to vote, but during this.
Yes, yes.
Well, the only thing I'll say is is that, look, I'm as sympathetic as the next person is. An absolutely beautiful house.
Yeah.
I think any structure anywhere near the house is not going to improve the view for me as I pass the house. I found, the first time I passed it, I thought it was markedly striking with all its windows and envy it right from the start. But just so I'm clear about this, we don't have to worry about or think about the hardships that it might entail if they build it, you know, and blow up the ledge or whatever. That's not whatever here, right? So it shouldn't affect our judgment about whether, well, that's going to be more difficult. So she would lean towards saying, yeah, I mean, it's just kind of, so that's so a lot of the time you spend on that, it's interesting, but it's nothing to do with us, right?
But.
Actually, it's not our job to find a place for them to do this that's not, not conforming.
In a way it is because we're, we have to, we, our job is kind of just to search for an alternative.
Oh, I didn't know that, is it?
Well, not.
That's our job to find alternatives?
No.
No.
Not so much to, to, they're coming to us suggesting that 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 they want to, they want to, they want to be approved because they have not found a suitable alternative. So.
We have sessions we've been through where we, we don't try to find.
Is an alternative, technically, if an alternative exists.
Right.
It's not our job to evaluate how feasible or not.
Right, that's what I mean. So the, right, the ledge work and all that kind of stuff is fascinating to me. So I'm always interested in learning, but it's absolutely nothing to do with uh, the voting on whether they can have this uh, uh, within ten feet, right? So that's just.
No, they're, in a way, they're here, they're here because they're saying they don't have a.
Right, right.
So that's why, that's why we're looking at their, at the whole picture and saying, do they really have an alternative in other, other site? They're, if they just came to us to say they want to put here because they want to put it here for no other reason than their hardship.
Right.
Then we're, that, that, that we have no reason to be.
Right, but but again, we're not, we, we really don't care about their, right? I mean, the alternative, whether they want to do it or not do whatever, it's, we're voting very specifically on whether these two options are palatable to the board, right? So, okay.
Good. Can I?
Sorry. Sure.
Um, I, I mean, I, I just feel that the problem with changing a conforming property to the non-conforming is a major shift from what we're supposed to be doing, which is to increase the conformity and not the non-conformity. And, you know, it's, I've never been there and it sounds like the topography is really bad. But there must be some other spot that they can put it um, where they're within the, you know, they're not within the setback somehow. It might have to be a little further away from the house, but that didn't seem to be the big, big problem for them. Having not seen the, how, how bad it is in terms of ups and downs and ledge, I still think we should try to not, and I realize I'm not even on the, I'm not voting today, but I still like to make the opinion that I think overall we're trying to decrease non-conformity rather than I, it, it bothers me, even though you're right, we, it's not going to be up to us in the future. Somehow that we are creating a non-conforming lot where there isn't one now. Isn't that kind of the back backward from what we're supposed to be doing?
It's certainly not the mandate of the zoning from the, from the zoning commission. Yeah. Steve?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I find the one thing that I heard in the language is, this was discussed by the owners and the representatives is, well, but then it would have to be far from the house and you have to have steps and you'd have to have this. But, you know, frankly, you bought a piece of land, the land has certain pluses and minuses. And if it has to be fifty feet away, I have it here. You know, I'm up on top of a hill. The barn, which is a garage, is down the hill. And, you know, when there's a big storm, I put the car in so it doesn't get buried. But otherwise I put it up by the house and I walk in. And, you know, that's, you know, I I don't see that having a garage that close to your house or so convenient to the house basically would overcome the fact that what we're being asked to do is to make the lot non-conforming and put something ten feet from the road, which is close. I mean, you know, we've, if you remember that one, that the fellow was going to build some additional bedrooms, they were right along, figure out what route it was. Um, you know, that, that, that's ten feet. I mean, I've driven by that. That's ten feet from the road. That's on the road. And I just think, I, I, you know, they really sort of dodged my question, which was, if you look in the north direction from the house, most of the land runs that way along schoolhouse road. And I find it difficult to believe that there's nowhere in there that you could put a garage. And yes, it might not be as close to the house as you'd like, but then again, you don't have to put your car in every day. I mean, we don't have that much snow anymore. I should knock on wood as I say that, but, yeah, but, you know, I just, I think it's a horrible precedent. And it it really could be criticized, you know, because I think it's, it's, I think Sue said it, Margaret said it, it's, it's the exact opposite of the mandate of this board.
Nancy, did you have a?
Something you were. Okay. I did have just one follow up comment. Phil said he thinks people have a right to a garage. And I think it's highly desirable to have a garage and I can understand wanting it pushing things against a garage, but there are only a couple of rights somewhat confused, like they really have a right to access to their property. You know, whatever the situation, that's a real right. There are probably a couple of other rights that come with the property, which I'm not familiar with. But I think I can understand that it's very reasonable, it's desirable, if I did that idea, but I don't think it's actually right. So I just wanted to pick on that word right. As compared to an access.
I know, I understand what you're saying. I'm, I'm trying to, what I'm trying to do is make sure that we I understand that, I understand where we're going as a board as far as we don't want to, we obviously don't want to increase non-conformity, but we also now have all these buildings that are, we have buildings that they're asking to add on a certain percentage, they're legally have a right to add on to. And because of that, I think we have to consider it. And I also want to address the fact that, and, and, you know, I just want to make sure the only reason they're here is because they, they believe they have a hardship in building it and and that's why they're in front of us. So yes, the two buildings are here. And then we're going to vote on it, but we have to look at the hardship that they're, they're trying to present which is to buy. So the, the reason there, if this was flat land and and that was it, that, that would be, that would be, that, that's what their presentation is, is to buy. That's the stated origin. So we have, so that's why the two buildings are not just, we're not just voting because there are two buildings here and we're not, we're, we're voting because they're, they're claiming hardship off, and that's why, that's why they want to put the two structures within ten feet of the road.
The two, you're talking about the option A and option B.
That's why, that's why they came through us because they're saying that they're, they're claiming a hardship because of the park. We can say, no, that's not a park. We can say that, that we don't want to do a non-conforming, that's fine, but that's why they're here.
So I mean, I think we feel the same way about blasting. But if you look at what's possible in Roxbury, we blast much more than this, to put in driveways and here and there, we're always approving blasting. I don't really like it, but it certainly is possible to get a permit to do it.
Well, and you know, that would be their choice and you know, you indicated that it's likely, it's quite possibly, we decide not to do it if that was, that was the option. So I'm also torn. I just I, I, I think on balance, I'm thinking about the creation of a non-conforming property. The distance to the road and then also the strictness of the criteria that Dale impresses on us, on us about if somebody has reasonable use of the property and reasonable use of the house, then technically a variance isn't in order. I, I think on balance, I guess I come down, I, I come down on the side of not granting it only because I think that there is the fact that there is an option is unpleasant as it may be, is a, is another criteria, another factor is I, I feel like the reasons to not approve it outweigh the reasons to approve it. That's Sue, Steve, anyone here in the room?
Up here.
I'm, I'm here, but not in the room.
No. Any more, any, any more thoughts, comments?
No, I, you know, it's an interesting conundrum because, again, I think just now that hits it on the head, you know, the house has to be usable, the house has to be serviceable on some level. So like access is, was said, is a right, you know, that you have to have access. But on the other hand, I don't think a garage is a right. And I think, you know, if they want a garage, there must be some way they can have a garage without us turning this zoning law upside down.
Well, that's.
I mean, what I'm trying, I'm not suggesting necessarily that everybody has a right to have a garage, they have a right to be heard to have the garage. My fear in this board has become is that we've become so afraid of case law and individual case that we, we're not allowed to prove anything. And then that we're, because, yeah, granted, maybe, maybe, at the end of the day, I understand where everybody's going. And at the end of the day, I'll probably go the same way as everybody else, but I just want to make sure that we're not so afraid of establishing precedents on a property that there's so, every single property in Roxbury is so unique and some of the, some of the things that we're we're, we're establishing, I think I constantly go back to it is we're, we're following case law from, from all parts of Connecticut, which are so far, so different than what, what we, where we are. And I think we as a board have to be able to, the individual determination. Otherwise, we're basically going to have to deny everything, which is what I'm afraid of. And that's, I'm not saying it's a reasonable request. It's not that, it's not that I'm necessarily saying I'm going to vote for it.
It's not that, it's not that I'm necessarily saying I'm gonna vote for it, I'm not gonna vote for it. I'm hearing exactly what you guys are saying, but I want to make sure that we look at every single case that comes before us, because, yeah, you're right, you don't have a right to do whatever you want, because that's why, I mean, we have zoning laws, I understand that. Obviously, I've been on this board for as long as, longer than anybody, so I understand what that is. But I just want to hear, I'll make sure we hear the other side and we know, we're not afraid to at least have this discussion.
Yeah.
So.
I think, I think, you know, Bill, can I, can I chime in on that? I think when I first looked at the materials, the thing that really troubled me the most was the ten feet to the road. That, you know, wasn't as if they said, look, we could put it here and it'll be forty-eight feet, you know, and I would probably sleep better on that, you know, even though I think the next point about it now becoming non-conforming would be equally sort of a problem for somebody, but I just think that this is just, you know, and, and, and again, you know, that's just my, you know, what sets to these things, anyway.
I, I, I totally understand where you're coming from, Steve, and I, I understand where everybody's coming from completely and, 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 and they do. So I don't want to, I don't want to say I'm for it or not for it, but I also want to make sure we consider the fact that I don't know the, I don't know how many square feet the house is, but let's say, we, we don't even, we didn't get the numbers, so I guess that was my issue. And then we have twenty-four by twenty, we have a twenty-four by twenty-four structure. So I don't know if we have that number.
Isn't though, isn't that, um?
Can we, uh, but I'm sorry, what would, it's, it's truly less than twenty-five percent. Is that what you're asking? Yeah, that's. Oh, yeah, yeah, no, 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 so, so, so I'm saying.
Doesn't that apply to non?
Right, yeah, it's a different. It does, but, but now this is a non-conforming property, we approve it, so, yeah. So I'm not saying we have to through it, don't through it, but we have to look at the fact that if this was, if this house is on the road, for example, all those barns, those sorts of things, that'd be approved, um, so.
Can I, can I throw one more thing into this?
Sure.
In, in terms of looking at it from a zoning point of view, ver, and a practicality point of view, I just, you know, my fear with a situation like this is we now open the door, you can put this structure there. What's to stop them from putting like a, a accessory apartment upstairs, a bedroom, a guest facility or this? It's just, I, I have to believe that there's somewhere within that five acres that you could do this and it's not as horrible as everyone thinks it is, and at least we protect the integrity of the zone.
Anybody else?
Anybody else?
I'm so glad I'm an alternate.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna close the discussion. Um, and ask for a motion.
Can I say one thing, one more?
Of course.
Because I don't want.
Of course.
It's my opinion that they will not come, that they will not do this garage in the front yard. That's not gonna happen, more than front yard, so. I mean, sorry, we'll have some kind of a meeting next week. We could give them an option for us to walk over there and look at the site and not vote it down. I'm not saying we have to, or if you guys aren't, if you're not up for that, I understand it, but I'm just throwing it out there. Is that a, we have time on the, this is, all right, Julie, we have time to do that, in a month, thirty minutes.
Um, you're sixty?
We have.
Running out because we lost a month because of the lack of notification.
All right, okay.
So, yeah, so that was.
But you could carry it for one more month. I'm sorry, what did you say? You could go one more month, but you have to make a decision.
Oh, why she wouldn't make, Bill. We, we wouldn't have to, we closed the hearing, we can't reopen the hearing, but we could gather more evidence.
Yes, right. Where you could make a decision.
Yeah. If I may, I don't know how many of you have been watching these programs, um, you know, for, we're supposed to have as board members, but, you know, they were very adamant about what was just said, that, you know, you can't, after you close it, add evidence. That basically, and there's a whole bunch of decisions on, on visiting property, which they talked about. I'm not so sure at this point you could do it.
That's a good point, thanks, Steve.
Yeah, I guess I had a, oh, I should be on one of Steve's. So if we give the variance, are we just giving it for the setback? Are we giving a variance for this exact size and type of building in the setback?
Yes.
It's a dual approval. It's the setback plus the, with that particular house, that particular structure. We, it's not just like we're getting, okay, you have a, an exception, a twenty-foot exception, and you could put.
We can't do that.
Uh, toolship.
Yeah, no, we can't do that.
It doesn't have to be.
It would be a variance to build a twenty-four by twenty-four.
In two car garage, yeah.
And so is it that, ipso facto, if we were to grant that very specific variance, it would automatically mean that the property becomes non-conforming?
Absolutely.
And so then, if they wanted to add on to that garage, they could do, as long as it's less than twenty-nine percent, they could add on.
They has to come to us.
They would have to come to this board and.
No, the twenty-five percent only applies to primary residents.
Okay, not to the additional, okay.
So then, yeah, okay.
I mean, I, we have, the only thing I would say is that we have, I'm certain, I don't, I don't have it in front of me, but we have taken a property that was, uh, beyond the setback and added this, hadn't, had, in the last fifty years, have to have added something closer to that to make it non-conforming, you know, so. But that's not what the mandate is now, so, no, I know.
Well, I, and I think that.
I understand, so.
Um, yeah. Do you have a motion? Anyone?
Okay, I'll move, I'll start with this. I'll move that we do not approve this application for variance on the grounds that it, it turns a conforming lot into a non-conforming lot, which runs counter to what our, uh, what our mission is, to what we're allowed to, to what our mission is to do under the regulations. The, there do appear to be options, they may be unpalatable, but there are options, including no build. No build is always an option. And it's, um, well, we have so many people that have problems with wanting to do something.
Wait, before you argue, finish your motion.
The last motion is, the third factor is that it involves putting a, a structure which would have people in it from time to time so close to the road.
Okay.
Sorry, Julie.
It's okay.
Would you like to go on in a more florid?
There were three reasons, right? Is that, Margaret, you had three reasons?
The non-conformity, the, uh,
Option.
The options and the structure so, so close to.
Safety.
Safety.
Other options, okay.
Okay, is, are there a second?
I say.
Okay, Margaret moves, Nancy seconds, discussion, further discussion. No? Okay, so then I would, um, let's vote. Margaret, we'll start with you again.
So, for the reasons just stated, then the motion, I vote to not approve the variance.
So you're, just so we're clear, you're voting in favor of the motion?
In favor of the motion.
Yeah, okay.
The motion is to deny.
Right.
These applications.
Right.
So you're not, yes.
Right, so, so, just so we're clear, the way the motion is stated, a vote in favor of the motion is a vote to deny there.
I vote in favor of the motion for the reasons in the motion.
Nancy?
Get out.
Okay, yeah. Bill?
I vote in favor to deny the motion.
Karen?
Based on the fact.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
No, I'm gonna say, based on the fact that, that I agree that it's a big ask, but that's why.
Yeah.
All right, so, that's it, I have to say.
Karen?
I, I vote in favor of the motion, which is to deny the, uh, application.
As do I. So, that would be unanimous.
Unanimous, five, zero.
Five, zero.
Oh, are, are both those folks also alts?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Wow, we hit the jackpot.
Jim and Larry, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your time.
I'd just like to say that this was a, a very nice presentation. I appreciate the, uh, it was well done, easy to follow, and I could appreciate it. Even I could read parts of it.
And, yeah.
The important part.
Yeah.
And it's just, and that was a great idea at the end, to do a, a walkthrough in the future. That's something that the applicants.
Just a completely gratuitous suggestion. Everything that I've been present for, even if I'm not voting and all that, I've always made a point to visit the property. Isn't that sort of like, do we even have to ask, have the person ask us?
Um, well, they did ask in their letter, they invited us to come.
But I'm not everywhere, I went to Blue Sorrento, I went to that guy who got.
So, in order for us, we can do an official sidewalk.
Which is.
As, as a commission.
Right.
And that requires then, it, then it's, then it's official. But m- most people at least drive by the property and look at and look.
So you've driven by it?
I've driven by, but I didn't get a walk.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you're gonna go in and actually walk the property.
We have had other applications where prior to coming to us, there was a walk around.
Oh, okay.
It was a very difficult decision.
Yeah, well, tricky ones like this, maybe you shouldn't request in advance, uh, walking around the grounds.
I think. I think wetlands, I think wetland sites visit everything.
Yeah.
Um, they do. And, but they make arrangements with the owner or the representative.
Right.
Before they actually step on the property.
Right, and, and we, I, I, I can recall two or three that we actually did a, we did a.
We did a sidewalk, yes, but before coming.
Okay, um, I'm gonna move us on to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you. Um, Julie, do you have a, an update on the required training?
I do, um. After the last training, um, I did not say that the, the conference was like.
Yeah.
Because the three classes that they offer was it. Go on and just take them because they're recorded. Uh, they did release the slides, but the slides are something you can view, you actually have to register for the class.
And how often are the classes?
We don't know, they haven't released anything yet, we don't mean they would have, um, so.
So what Steve went to.
Steve's, what Steve went to was one of the classes when we first notified everybody you have to take training.
So you went, you can't go back, like, I went and looked at one of them, that doesn't count?
No, you actually have to register for it, sit through it, and then they send you, which we found out in Steve's case, they did send him a notice of participation.
Okay.
But it's a live class, can't you just go, I mean, they say it's a new class available and you can watch it at your leisure, right? You don't have to.
No, you actually have to physically sit there and you need four hours of training.
But I had a certain time of the rule to give it, okay.
Yeah, it is clear the only place offering with this. When I was in Washington, they announced these trainings, understood there might be some other options.
It isn't the only one, and there was unfortunately one that was done on, back on March eleven. That was an all-day training.
Yep.
Um, but they didn't include, include affordable housing. So you could have gone to that.
Affordable housing is required.
Affordable housing is your one requirement, you have to have training. So, um, and UConn cleared it off for the affordable housing one too.
Yeah.
So we know they'll be releasing it again, and as more information comes out and the Congress is starting to get, um, a little bit more involved, so information will be pointed out and we'll make sure we'll get it to you, so. Like I said, this is new for everybody.
Registered, were they actually able to register to take the class?
Yes, Steve did. Steve did, and actually, three members of UConn did also.
So that's good. Kim did, Kim did it.
And I want to say two other people. Um, one of them may have done all three, along with Kim.
But on the, on a very specific day and a very specific time.
It was like a four in the afternoon until like from four to five, which when I understand really was more like four to five-thirty.
Yes.
And that was.
I thought it's a four-hour thing.
It, but there are three separate classes.
Oh, I see, I understand.
You have to take four hours.
You have to take four hours, and it's usually broken up into three.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
And then, yeah, so you can take two of anything within land use discipline, while one has to be affordable housing.
Okay, Steve, how was it?
Yeah.
Well, it was okay, I mean, I actually did two of them so far, but what, according to Julie saying, the one doesn't count. But I think we ought to contact UConn, and I'm gonna ask them about it and say, I don't understand, since they're putting it online, this, this program, why you shouldn't get credit if you go afterwards and watch it? Because they're available at their site, you can watch all of them now.
Yeah, I went and wa, I did, I did watch one, but I guess there's no way to verify that I did it, right?
No way to verify it. And because Steve did eventually get the notice of participation, that's what counts, and that's what we have to keep track of in our records.
Okay, and we have until the end of the year, right?
Yeah, until the end of the year.
Is this gonna be one of those December thirty-first things here? It's gonna be like college? An all-nighter?
It's a, I have to take it too.
Is it worth? Getting, uh, just an idea, um, getting together with Bridgewater and Washington and the other commissions and just, and, and see if we can just do a day?
It's actually, that's a very good suggestion.
Because it's us and planning and zoning, right?
Right, it's, um, yeah, wetlands does not have to do this.
Right, so.
Are you sure of that?
Yes.
I thought it was.
This is not remote, it's remote.
Yes, and there was one, the one, um, back on March eleven, was, that was also remote, that there might have been an inverse option.
Oh.
Yeah, um, but no, that actually, it, this all came out about Public Act twenty-one, twenty-nine, wetlands is not in it.
That's crazy.
There is legislation this year to increase required training for wetlands commissioners and agents.
There already is a required training for wetlands, right?
More being imposed with what's called the Hidden Wetlands Bill up against.
I did, I, I did, I did listen to, to one of the wetlands meetings where the Chair of the Wetlands Commission did have a opinion on
Which one?
The required training. Um, no, only that, that it, that, that some of it comes from industry, apparently, that the, the.
I think that, I think you maybe.
Are we closed?
Nope, not yet.
No, no, okay. Let's make it this, this, all right, oh, all right, yes, let's, our only other business is, um, so more to come, Julie, on that, right?
More to come, and we'll look into, into the idea of training with other towns.
Okay, um, and, um, I just need approval of the minutes in the February sixteenth meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes from February sixteen.
I say.
Karen moves, Nancy seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we're done.
Okay, so then that, can I call you, um, just to fill in on some of the things like this?
Absolutely.
Okay, I don't know where we stand with the.